I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of May 11th, 2020. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org. Excuse me? At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speak or sign ups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, and you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Farrar?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I would like to, uh... I would like to make a motion to continue 3B7.
Okay, I will second that motion.
We, uh, I think we had a motion from Rick first, so is that a from the amendment to the motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. I fully agree with that amendment.
Okay, uh, is there any other discussion?
I would like to keep that discussion open enough so that we can tell the public why we're pulling it. I talked to the city manager earlier today, and I think the public deserves an explanation of some of the details, not a lot, but we've got to explain that we put it on the agenda. I have 300 emails today and over the weekend, and I think we need to allow the people to either express themselves or hear a reason why it was pulled. I think that's fair.
Okay.
Councilmember Wagner, I can certainly provide an explanation during my city manager update if that would work for you. I'd be happy to do that during that time.
Yeah, I just think we owe the folks a bit of detail on what transpired. People have forgotten the history of... That we wanted to explore this in the past and that you were assigned a task to do it, and Terry Davis wrote a great letter about it, but the public doesn't know that. So I think we need to have somebody explain that to the public.
Well, if I could jump in here, and I'm not putting words in Mikey's mouth, but I assume that's the reason why it's being continued is because everyone should be afforded the opportunity to chime in in a regular session. And, uh, that's, it's too big an issue to be handled here, and it's not being just tossed out, it's being put at a time when it's more appropriate for everybody to be able to speak on it. But I do think a few words about the lineage of it are important.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that as part of my update.
I think Rick's right. I think this is not the forum for such a big item. I think it caught all of us kind of off guard, and for best intentions in this COVID world we're in, trying to get things done and move forward. And yes, public participation is vitally important, and this is, obviously, we've seen not the forum where we can really do an important item like this that needs a lot more public time and participation, even though it would be very early in the process. I just think it's inappropriate.
Yeah, I agree with Rick and Mikey that I don't think this is the the appropriate forum for this discussion in a remote meeting, and I'd like to see it continued to a date when meetings are, you know, held in person again.
I didn't hear from Skylar, but thank you, Karen. I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. But that sounds fair to me, and I hope everybody at home that wanted to speak on this topic or was going to Zoom in can get that moment with the city manager to explain what went on and give us a little back history. Thank you.
Anybody else? Skylar? Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Is the motion to continue to a date uncertain?
Yes, that was the motion, yes.
Okay. Heather, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, may I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 8, 2020.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, um, we will now have a staff update on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who are tuning into the virtual meeting for the first time, I'll first give an update on what's going on in the city with the COVID-19 pandemic, and then as part of my regular city manager update, I'll give an update on other items, including the postponement of the item 3B7, the Zone Text Amendment. So as I've provided information in the past, city staff continues, for the most part, to be working remotely through telecommuting. We do have a handful of staff members that are at City Hall to handle things that just can't be handled remotely. Our public works staff and our code enforcement staff and our parks maintenance staff continue to work out in the field to make sure that the city is safe and that our infrastructure and everything remains secure. And then we are accepting plans and whatnot at City Hall, and so you can make an appointment by visiting the city's website to submit, to have an appointment made if you have anything to do. We're also now accepting plans remotely, and we're able to issue building permits by electronically. So that's definitely an improvement to everything, particularly during this time. Our emergency operations center continues to be open and staffed remotely, particularly by our communications team. Our media team is actively engaged every day. Though we have ramped down some of the messaging that we were doing. Previously, we were doing a twice-a-day message as well as messaging on the weekends, and we've decided that there wasn't a need for that much messaging. So we're now doing a once-a-day about 2:00 in the afternoon, which gives us time to collect information from both the daily state briefing and the daily county briefing that happened at 12:00 and 1:00, and then pushing information out then. We're not doing a regular message anymore on Saturdays and Sundays unless there's something that is emergent that comes up, and then we'll push that out. As of today, the Department of Health, Public Health with the county has listed that there are 32 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the city of Malibu. They do update their website once a day with all of those statistics. So if that's something that the public is interested in, they can visit the county's website for that. We're continuing to coordinate with both Core and Malibu Medical on testing. We've been doing drive-through testing at City Hall for the last about five or six weeks. To date, we've administered 3,300 tests and found 56 positives. Many of those positives were actually asymptomatic. And I do want to just remind everybody that the number 56 is not going to correlate to the number of positive cases of Malibu residents because we were testing both first responders and essential employees. And then the last two weeks, the tests were actually open to anybody within the area so that that number won't match our city number. And we're looking to see if we can start administering an antibody test. To date, we've just been doing the nasal swaps. So as we get more information and the ability to do those tests, we will start those back up. This past weekend, the County of Los Angeles opened up some of the trails throughout the county and in Malibu. Most of our trail systems and parks were open with the exception of Solstice Canyon. The beaches have been closed. I've heard late today that the county expects to make an announcement tomorrow to open up beaches for recreation purposes only starting on Wednesday. The time of that opening has not yet been announced publicly, but what they would expect is that the beaches will be open for surfing, walking, and running. It will not allow any laying on the sand, sitting on the sand, no picnicking, no umbrellas, no canopies, no coolers. And then just another note, this past weekend, because it was the first weekend of the trails opening up, I was very concerned that we would be overrun in Malibu by visitors who've just been so anxious to get out and come out into our parks that I did authorize a temporary hiring of public private security guards, and we have those positioned throughout the city at some of the areas where we seem to get the bigger number of visitors. And the feedback I thought was positive, so I'm glad that was something we could provide. I don't know how long or how many times we'd be able to do that, but certainly an option as we move forward, just because of the number of people coming in, that it's hard, even with additional law enforcement in the community, it's hard to maintain other crowds. I also have announcement, the County Department of Public Health has also issued information about swimming pools and fitness centers that are located in apartments, condominium complexes, and homeowners associations. And at this time, all of the pools and fitness centers in that type of situation are closed, and more information on that can be found on the county's website. And then as we look forward to hopefully the stay-at-home order being lifted right now, the stay-at-home order is through May 15th. I've been working with city staff and our department heads to come up with a return-to-work plan that would address all of the necessary social distancing protocols to keep both the members of our public coming into the building as well as our employees safe. So we're looking at kind of a phased rollback in of staff that would include the building being closed for appointment only, allowing only a certain amount of staff in the building at a time, and continuing to have as many people work from home. We have ordered Plexiglas shields for all of our public counters and certainly have masks for our employees to make sure that they stay safe and coming up with cleaning protocols, not only for City Hall and the public areas of City Hall, but also for all of our other public facilities. So that's my update on COVID-19, and I'm more than happy to answer questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to item 2A, written and oral communications from the public on items not on the agenda.
We have 16 speakers, Mayor. I'm going to read them off and then call them in order. First, we'll have Judy Villaloblanca, followed by Diane Carter, followed by David Dryer, followed by Joe Drummond, followed by Colin Drummond, followed by Keon Schulman, followed by Edward Menewski, followed by Jennifer Engel, followed by Scott Engel, followed by Olivia Riley, followed by Joseph Patterson, followed by Kevin Zinger, followed by Howard Redsky, followed by Bert Ross, followed by E. Barry Haldeman, followed by Hanish Patterson. So first, we'll have Judy Villaloblanca.
Thank you.
Judy, are you there? I don't think Judy is in the meeting right now. So we can move on to Diane Carter.
Hello, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. Okay, I'm sorry. I will start. Thought I was unmuted. I apologize. Okay. I'm sorry. Good evening. I wanted to ask the city council and staff to please restart meetings of the city commissions. We have not met March, April, and now May. City Council and Planning Commission have been meeting successfully using remote technology. I'm guessing that may still be necessary in the coming month. I think commissions provide a critical opportunity for citizens to give input on important issues, and they should be considered essential or not exist. I'm doing remote interviews tomorrow for youth commissioners. I see no reason to cancel further commission meetings, so I'd like to get that done. I also wanted to remind the council of your commitment to establish an environmental sustainability commission. This was delayed by the Woolsey Fire and now again due to the COVID pandemic. I previously pointed out that there is a City Council Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee, which requires staff time and meets at least three to four times a year, and that the new commission could meet quarterly in its first year to consider constraints of staff time and budget. I really see no reason that this commission cannot be initiated as promised. Our city vision includes preservation of unaltered natural resources and states the people of Malibu are responsible custodian of the area's natural resources for present and future generations. And yet, we have no commission dedicated to this purpose. Please do this now. Lastly, I was greatly disappointed to hear that implementation of the lidlock and dark sky ordinances were postponed. Again, environmental issues. For a change, I would really like to hear from staff, you know, this is what we could do now within the challenges that we have. Maybe delay the time, give a new timeline, give some breaks to people for costs. Be creative, but let's do something instead of doing nothing. You know, we're always going to have constraints and challenges, and that should not prevent us from prioritizing and protecting our environment, which really cannot survive delays. Thank you very much for listening. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Diane Carter. Diane, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of David Dryer, who is actually going to be speaking after me. But I will begin by first thanking Mayor, City Manager, and members of the council. Thank you all for your service to the city of Malibu. Again, the topic I'm here to speak about tonight is the denial of a fee waiver on the fire rebuild for David Dryer. I would like to share with you some things about David. I am a 21-year resident and a longtime friend. Before moving here, David was frequently in Malibu and hoped to one day call Malibu his home. In May of 2010, his dream came true when he purchased his home on Canaan Doom Road, and he became my neighbor. From the very first housewarming party up to the horrific day of the Woolsey Fire, David's home was our go-to place and a center for many celebrations attended by all of our local friends. Several of us spent days doing landscape design with him and planting what grows best in Boo. We spent even more time at local yard sales, finding numerous treasures to furnish his home. He was my hiking buddy, ringing my gate at daybreak and joining me for beautiful walks down Zumira's to PCH and back. On a day when I went to leave something in his mailbox, I realized, well, there wasn't one, and therefore there was no mail delivery. It was then that I became aware of security threats made against him and that people were serving jail time related to this matter. We all miss his daily presence in Malibu and can't wait for him to rebuild. It will help us all feel a little closer to normal. I asked the council to reconsider and waive the permit fees. David should be treated no differently than other locals trying to rebuild their home. He is, after all, local. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from David Dryer.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Yes, thank you. First, let me thank all of you for your service to our city, especially during this post-fire and COVID-19 era. I'm going to share just an email that I had sent to you all, and I'd just like to read that briefly. I'm writing because at the last minute, as we were getting our permits for the fire rebuild, I was denied the fee waiver. I'd like to briefly explain the situation. As Diane nicely said, in 2010, I bought my 1,472-square-foot home so that I could, after 32 years in Congress, live full-time in Malibu. It is the only house that I have ever owned. Still wanting to continue in public service, in 2013, I joined the Obama administration as a member of his Foreign Affairs Policy Board, telecommuting from Malibu. Following my parents' passing, I inherited some money. Because this was my dream home, I decided to pay off the mortgage. I don't believe that I should be penalized for that. Two years after buying my house, because of projects in LA, I got a small condo apartment with a mortgage. For security reasons, which Diane has just touched on, which I've discussed with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Manager, I have no mail delivery. It goes to a staff member in Pasadena. I have for many years had my car insured at my house, and I provided the city proof of that, and I am now a registered Malibu voter. I'm happy to explain the details of the security issue, but my chief of staff has sent an email to members of the council that get into a greater detail. Media reports over the last 10 years have described me as a Malibu resident because I am. Neighbors like Bert Ross, from whom you will be hearing, has conveyed this, and I have separately sent to you all NBC News story, Wikipedia posts, local press stories, all of which describe me as a Malibu resident. I am not a developer, and I have never rented my home to anyone. Like so many of my neighbors, I'm working to rebuild following the loss of everything that I had in that house, and I simply ask to be treated like the Malibuite that I am. Thanks again to you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and to City Manager Feldman, and to Yolanda, and all of the others on the staff who are trying to help all of us through this very, very difficult situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Joe Drummond.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Farrar and City Council, thank you for listening to me today and for all of your service as well. I touched on this at the last council meeting. I believe you're making some final decisions on this year's budget, and we talked about the fee increase for the city council appeal, and although there was a 50% increase put onto that fee, I'm grateful it wasn't more than this, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Wagner spoke about how fees have been reduced in the past. My husband and I are here on behalf of our neighbors in our Ocean View neighborhood and community to ask that the view preservation permit of an unwilling, uncooperative neighbor be reduced from the current $2,529. We have all paid the initial fee of $275 for our primary view determinations to protect our views, so it was a surprise to find out that we had to pay more to actually restore our views. And if the foliage owner is unwilling, the fee rises from the $604, which is still quite high, to $2,529. Plus, once trimming or removal is approved by the planning commission, the neighbors have to pay for this exorbitant cost as well. That could be another $7,000 to $10,000 on top of this fee. The paperwork is completed by the applicant, and there's not much for the planning department to do to show the planning commission in these cases, so please reduce this fee to the normal $604 that is for a regular agreement. A regular agreement should be reduced to below $300, at least half of this fee or no fee at all. As I understand it, not one person in Malibu has filed this type of application in the four-plus years that this ordinance has been around because of this exorbitant fee. A group of neighbors in our community of Big Rock would like to submit for a view permit application for an existing primary view determination for our neighbor that refuses to make an arrangement and asks that this fee be greatly reduced as soon as they will so we can take this to the planning commission. Realize that the reason the view preservation ordinance was put in place is to protect our ocean views, not to have to pay an extremely high price to get them back. It is already a time-consuming five-step process, and the city should make it easier for the foliage owner to cooperate with view owners by reducing this fee. For $275, we paid to have our view protection protected, and the city came out and took a photo to formalize this in agreement. We ask that a similarly low fee like this allow for the views to actually be preserved and protected. In our case, we have actually 10 people donating to the $2,529 fee to have one person file the permit application from their viewpoint. We would like to have the option to protect all 10 people's views and not just from one person's perspective by lowering this fee. Thank you for considering this.
Next, we'll hear from Colin Drummond.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I essentially want to echo what my wife said and draw your attention to that pretty fantastic conversation council had a couple of weeks ago in identifying a fair and reasonable price to exercise one's rights before the planning commission in this case and the city council in the other case. It, you know, I just think, again, $2,529 is kind of sending the message that maybe the city doesn't really want to hear from people. It's a lot of money. Particularly if you look at view preservation, there's no gray. It's very black and white. You look, you have a before picture, and you have an after picture. And it's very clear that the view is not being preserved, and it must be dealt with. So, you know, we've raised money. We were bothered by it. We're going with it, but we'd like to request that the fee be brought down to more of a reasonable range so that us normal Malibu people can exercise our rights. And yeah, give that some consideration. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Keon Schulman.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Farrar, City Council members and staff. Thank you for your support for the lidlock ordinance. We understand the current situation and the stress on the budget. However, the health of the city needs to be the highest consideration. We have a clear road problem with open dumpsters feeding and multiplying the road and population. It is critical that this ends. It is imperative that the city staff recognizes this health threat and restore the budget to include monitoring the dumpsters and demand safe, sealable, sanitary dumpsters for the health and safety of the citizens and service workers. The already-existing protocol has been to inspect 70 establishments twice a year for a total cost of $6,000, according to staff. This precedes the ordinance, and we assume this will be maintained. However, could you please consider the See Click Fix app and website, which efficiently recruits the citizenry to find and report problems? No staff time involved except for citation violators. Mayor Elise Buckley-Weber tells us that this has worked very successfully for Agora Hills. It costs $7,000 per year. We suggest that the budget could be adjusted to this modest amount until proper staffing can be supported. Also, please consider franchising a dumpster company to service Malibu, to have more control of these issues. While we are waiting for the economy to revive, there are shopping malls and takeout restaurants throughout Malibu that still have defective dumpsters and are not sealable. The trash companies had two years to respond and deliver safe, sealable, sanitary dumpsters. There is no excuse for the lockable dumpsters not to be ready to go by now. We encourage the city staff to make the dumpster ordinance a high priority. Preventative actions is one of the keys for successful roading control. Let's not invite another health crisis into our city. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Edward Minewski.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Well, my name is Edward Minewski. I appreciate you hearing me today. And you heard from Joe Drummond and her husband earlier. I'm the neighbor that refused to cut down the tree because the request is extremely unreasonable. I mean, they want me to cut the tree to the roof line, and then all I'm going to have is a stump. They're more than 2,000 feet away from me. And I've been to their home. I've seen. I don't see how my tree is impeding their view, but I'm continuously being harassed by them with letters and threats and all kinds of stuff. I just don't know. Do I have any kind of recourse on this? Hello?
Thank you. The council is not allowed to comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't know what else to... I heard that they were going to protest about some kind of a fee. It's just ridiculous. I feel like I'm being harassed. So I understand you guys can't comment on that, so I guess I'll just wait for whatever decision you guys make. All right. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Jennifer Engel.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Hi, I'm speaking today in opposition of a homeless shelter on Civic Center Way at the old courthouse by the Malibu Library. Space is a very precious, limited resource in Malibu. I believe that placing a homeless shelter in the center of a densely residential area and thriving business center is not the best use of the old courthouse property. Malibu does not have a wealth of entry-level jobs. We do not have low-income or rent-controlled housing. Very few properties are able to accept housing vouchers, and we have very few medical and mental health resources for those suffering from issues associated with homelessness. Unfortunately, if you are homeless and housed in Malibu, there are limited resources to support your rehabilitation and reentry into society. Furthermore, the uniqueness of our city is not supportive of a successful pathway to rehabilitation. At this time, I do... I'm sorry. At this time, I would not be realistic to expect that housing a homeless person in the center of Malibu would allow that individual to... would not realistically allow that individual to expect that... I'm sorry, I'm reading. It would not be realistic to expect that housing a homeless person in the center of Malibu would allow the individual to find a job and affordable housing in the immediate area. We do not have the same infrastructure and resources as some of our surrounding cities. We would be doing the homeless in Malibu disservice by housing them in a community that does not have the resources to support the rehabilitation and reentry into society. Malibu has a growing population of children and families, and far too few city-owned resources for these families. The very best playgrounds for Malibu children are in the center of Malibu and are privately owned parks at the Country Mart and the Park at Cross Street. These parks are places families feel reasonably safe. It is a shame that many do not feel the same about our own library due to being harassed by the homeless despite increased security. I am a resident homeowner, taxpayer, voter, and mom to a young child. I live in the Civic Center area and believe a homeless shelter at the old courthouse will directly impact my family. I am asking City Council to favor a decision that best reflects the interest of the many and not the interest of the few. I am asking the City Council to immediately cease working with the state and county in regards to turning the courthouse into a homeless shelter until they have first considered the impacted wishes of the nearby residents. I have heard the City Council claim that public opinion is very important to them when it comes to the allocation of space and property within the city. I want to see proof that our opinions matter to the City Council. I want the location of a homeless shelter to take into consideration the wishes of its nearby residents and business owners. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Scott Engel.
Scott is putting our sun down, so if you guys could move him to a little bit later, or he'll have to speak at the next meeting.
Okay, moving on, we'll next hear from Olivia Riley.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I would like to speak on something that was brought up last meeting, a homeless shelter in Malibu, specifically at the old courthouse. I want to start off by saying I have worked as a mental health counselor in homeless shelters across Los Angeles. As someone with firsthand experience, I know that Malibu and Civic Center is not the right place for a homeless shelter. While I could go on and on about how we don't have the resources, mental health services, job market, transitional housing, and low-income housing, et cetera, the reality is, we will not be housing just Malibu homeless. We'll be housing homeless from all parts of Los Angeles. My personal experience with our current homeless population has not been a pleasant one. I have been verbally harassed and followed by transients while shopping and walking in my neighborhood. At Ralph's, I have asked people to walk me to my car at night. On Sundays, I do not feel safe walking to the farmer's market from my house. This is a problem. The surrounding neighborhoods of the shelters I worked at are not safe, and I don't want Malibu to become worse than it already is. Again, a shelter will welcome more homeless to our area than we already have. Once the sidewalk on Civic Center to Malibu Canyon goes in, that will only welcome more crime by transients to the condos in this area. These condo communities have already seen an increase in crimes, such as car break-ins, squatters, and even assaults by transients over the recent months and years. Having a homeless shelter at the courthouse with a direct walking path to these condos will only invite more crime. My professional opinion, based on working directly with the homeless population as a mental health counselor, is that this shelter would be devastating to our community. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Joseph Patterson.
Yeah. Hi, this is Joe Patterson. Thank you for hearing me tonight. While I appreciate that Item 3B7 is being tabled at this time or pushed forward, I would just like to comment briefly on it. And I'd like to thank the City Council and staff for your efforts thus far in trying to establish such a program and simultaneously trying to put our city in a position to establish and enforce restricted parking along PCH to curb the unlawful overnight parking and camping that we see taking over our coastline. I support the establishment of a safe parking program. However, I implore the council and the city staff to be transparent and include the public in any decisions or discussions towards identifying appropriate sites for the program prior to starting a process like rezoning Zuma Beach to allow such an operation to be established there. The public should have been notified that this was even being considered as a location prior to this action appearing on your agenda. I hope that in the future, you can find a way to include the citizens of Malibu in your process, and I hope that we can continue this process, being that we don't know when we're going to be able to meet, you know, in the council chambers. I think this discussion needs to continue, and the public needs to be included, and we need to understand what sites have been considered and what the pros and cons are, and why, at this time, it seemed like Zuma was the ideal place or was the only choice we had. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Kevin Zinger. Kevin Zinger? Okay, moving on, we'll hear from Howard Rundsky.
Hi, good evening, City Council and Mayor. First, I'd like to commend you guys on what you're doing, and the city manager as well. I think our city is being run as well as any in this tough time. And I'd also like to speak to my friend David Drier. We've been friends for over a decade. I've had dinner and drinks, watched sporting events at his home on Canaan many times over the years. I believe the definition of the rule being applied to him is not the author's intent. It's unfair and cruel to treat a fire victim and fellow Malibuite in this manner. It's not who I believe we are, and I believe you folks should end David's terrible nightmare and treat him like all the other Malibu residents that were fire victims and waive his permit fees. Thank you for letting me speak on this matter, and I trust you'll do the right thing. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Bert Ross. Bert Ross? Okay, moving on, we'll hear from E. Barry Haldeman.
Me? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I'm here to speak about a sensitive matter that I just learned about over the weekend, and that's State Senate Bill 1090, which is sponsored by State Senator Patricia Bates, who basically covers the area of Orange County, Laguna Niguel, and some parts of San Diego County. She has sponsored a bill that is going to be heard by Senator Henry Stern's Natural Resources Committee on the 19th of this month. And it requires the Coastal Commission to grant permits to repair your seawall to cities, counties, state agencies, and existing oceanfront homeowners unless the shoreline device presents a substantial threat to public health and safety. Permission can be granted by the local jurisdiction. If they deny it, there must be specific reasons for the denial. Likewise, if Coastal denies its specific reasons, and there's a clear path to appeal to the court within 90 days, there's a $25,000 sand mitigation payment that's required, but it will allow one to repair their seawall. This is done originally, we talked to the legislative assistant today, was done in response to an August of 2019 oceanfront luff collapse and Encinitas killing three members of the same family, also previous collapses of a concrete beach wall walkway near the back of Capistrano Beach and some other collapses. The point of this is, right now, the bill only covers Orange County and San Diego County, and it's obviously important to everybody who lives on the beach because it will require that the Coastal Commission give legitimate reasons for having denied something and work with the homeowner to do so, unless it really substantially impacts public safety. We contact Senators Stern to support the bill, that we ask the bill be amended to include Malibu, and that we do whatever we can to help this bill, which will be very difficult to get through, I'm sure, so that those of us who live on the beach can protect our structures, can protect the septic systems that they may surround, and that the city itself can protect roads and things like that from the Coastal Commission having their way with us. So I will send a copy of this bill to everybody, to Riva and the City Council and other relevant people so you can see it and make your own decision, but it looks like a very, very good idea to me just to keep things in perspective and to protect, in my case, the biggest investment you make in your life. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Hamish Patterson.
Hi, hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, council members. I just, again, want to commend you how you've all been handling the city's operation with this COVID thing. But I wanted to address the situation with, as far as the hotel on Pacific Coast Highway. I wasn't talking about whether it was being brought to a public vote or discussion. What I was talking about was the fact that it was brought up to have the city negotiate with Norm, and we had the mayor and the mayor protam both acknowledge publicly that they have never done this before, and they didn't know what to ask for. We had Councilmember Peak not knowing where he would designate the cash if we received it, too. And so having that not be addressed publicly alarms me that the City Council would do that and not really have done their homework. Having talked with Norm, there seems to be a lot of stuff we can do down there to expedite his project in a functional way for the city of Malibu. We have a lobby firm that works in Sacramento that the city pays for. We have a certified traffic engineer on staff. So we're telling me we're not going to spend that money or any money to get all those traffic lights expedited on a timing level so we can move traffic through the city of Malibu. Alarms me. So when we go talk about whether we're going to negotiate, maybe we need to have that in a public forum because you're not negotiating for you, the city council. You're negotiating for us, the public, and if the public can't ask you what we want you to negotiate for, what's the point of having a public forum? Lastly, I would also like to remind everybody up there that you swore to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. I understand that we suspended our constitutional rights during this panic, right? It was a panic. And I suggest that the City Council of Malibu begin to form some sort of task force or spend some money to investigate how we got to this point where we're going to have the governor of the California say we got a $54 billion deficit. We got cities with deficits all around us. We have business owners that are going to lose their business, and we need to figure out what went down in this situation so that it never happens again because we have unelected officials in the county of Los Angeles specifically making determinations whether or not we can open our businesses, whether or not we can go to our beaches. Barbara Ferrer at the City of Los Angeles County, or whatever, is not an elected official. She can't keep me from using the beach, which is my constitutionally-protected right. She can't keep anyone from opening their business. So I suggest the city of Malibu begin to investigate what went down because it seems pretty like a lot of shoddy, confusing science, and we're looking at it, and it seems like we might have overblown this whole thing. Anyway, thank you all for your service. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll just go back a little bit to Scott Engel. Scott, are you available? We can hear you.
Yep, oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, my name is Scott Engel. I've been a Malibu resident since 1994. I'm actually, want to address the homeless proposal that I just saw that came across, and I'm actually against that. And a couple of things I just want to make aware, and I'm just curious on how the council's going to handle this, is the location, why that location was picked, how did that come about? And it seems to me there could be a better use for that facility to benefit the city. And then also, the other thing I want to do is, has there been a task force or anybody that has done research to see a better location for a homeless shelter center? And then also, has there been any, you know, surveys or anything done where this would address the homeless? Because I don't believe Malibu's really set up to have a homeless shelter because there's really no infrastructure for it, and there might be a better city that's well-equipped for that. So I just wanted to share remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, we'll circle back to Bert Ross.
Okay, now you're on.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Mayor Farrar, members of the City Council, and City Manager Feldman. My name's Bert Ross, and I've been a friend of David Drier since... My name's Bert Ross, and I've been a friend of David Dreyer since Joan and I moved to Malibu some eight years ago. He was my neighbor a few houses down the street until both of our homes burned down during the Woolsey fire. David was one of the first people to greet us when we arrived in Malibu. We have celebrated his birthday and holidays at his home, and he has been a frequent guest at our home. If you had been to David's home, I don't think there would be any doubt as to why we all considered his house his home. Almost all of the items he inherited from his family, as well as remembrances from 30-plus years of public service in Congress, adorned the walls of his home. I gather that because his mail was delivered to Pasadena and because he voted there, that there was some question as to whether he should be entitled to have his rebuilding fees waived. As somebody who served in public office, when I moved out of the town where I had served as mayor, it took me some time to change my voter registration. I did not want to appear to have turned my back on the town I had served, but Fort Lee was no longer where I resided. I sincerely hope that all of you who have been so extraordinarily helpful to those of us who have lost our homes will not let a technicality prevent the fellow public servant from what is fair. I cannot imagine that the intention of the ordinance waiving rebuilding fees was to deny this needed benefit to the likes of David. With great respect and continued appreciation for all you do to help our community, thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, we will move on to item 2B. Riva, do you have a city manager update?
Yes, I do, thank you. I want to start by just giving some background information on item 3B7. This is the item that was continued by the council during the approval of the agenda. First, our intent is never to put something on an agenda without vetting it through the public. And while I think this item confused a lot of people, I wanted to give some context and background to what we were doing. On January 29th, the City Council held a special meeting where they discussed the homeless situation in Malibu. And we had a very robust discussion. And the council directed staff to come up with locations for a safe parking plan and also for a temporary shelter that could help those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Subsequent to that, as we all know, the pandemic broke out. And so the way we've been going and handling these meetings has definitely changed. We also have been able to put up new parking signs along Pacific Coast Highway, which has dramatically decreased the number of people who are living in their vehicles along the highway. With the fact knowing that the stay-at-home order will be lifted soon, those parking signs are going to go away, and we're going to have an influx of vehicles back on the highway, I was trying to line up our ducks so that when we came forward to the council to have another robust discussion about possible locations, we would be able to act as quickly as possible. The county had identified part of a lot on Zuma as one of the opportunities that could be used for a safe parking lot. A safe parking program and a safe parking lot are something that is a very controlled program. Typically, it is completely fenced in. There is an onsite staff person who is responsible for those people who are enrolled in a program. There are very strict rules, set times when individuals in their vehicles can enter the site in the evening. The site has been completely closed all night. There's no in and out. And then in the morning, the individuals have to leave. Part of getting them into the safe parking program means that they're also being enrolled into services and on a path to finding permanent housing. It is never an intent to develop anything in part of the city as an encampment, which I think has been a semantic problem that may have come across. So with that being said, knowing that sometime, hopefully in July, we'll all be back to normal and being able to meet in public with members of the public being able to come into City Hall and into the chambers to have these discussions, what we were trying to do on the staff level was get through some of the technical hurdles so that when we said, here are some options for the safe parking program and locations, we didn't also have to say, oh, but that one, if you want it, we can't do because it means a zone tax amendment, and that's going to take another several months. So we were just trying to make sure that when we presented to the council all the possible options from which the council could select, we had everything ready to go. So the intent was never to bring something forward without a robust discussion. And the item that would have been discussed tonight that got continued is kind of ministerial in the sense that it allows the Planning Commission and the zoning subcommittee to start discussing whether they even want to move forward with the zone tax amendment and get the ball rolling. It doesn't authorize an activity. It doesn't allow a program. It doesn't set a location. It just changes some of the language in the code so that if down the line the council decided that was an area that they wanted to consider, it would already be a legal path forward. So again, the intent during this very difficult time where we're all meeting remotely like this is not to bring any big items forward that require a lot of conversation because we definitely want the public's input and feel that that's extremely important. With all that being said, another reason that the safe parking program is going to be an important part of how we assist our homeless community. Several months ago, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the date. I think it was in November, we did bring forward a coastal development permit that would put some parking restrictions along Pacific Coast Highway in the Las Tunas area. One side of the street would be limited, no parking 12:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and the other side from 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. And that coastal development permit needs to be approved by the California Coastal Commission. And the Coastal Commission's staff and the executive director have been very frank with me, as well as other staff members, that they feel part of their role is to make sure that there are services for those people who are currently using those locations to be in their vehicles, and that having a safe parking program within the limits of the city is going to be an important component of getting that conditional, that coastal development permit passed. They did refer back to the permit that was passed in the coastline to Topanga Stretch of Pacific Coast Highway and said that one of the reasons that they were able to authorize that was because the county could demonstrate that they also had some safe parking programs that people could go to. So with all that, I know that was a lot of information, but that was sort of the background of why we were bringing forward, again, this ministerial item. But we hear everybody loud and clear, and this will certainly be put off till we're all back in public together, and we can discuss it further. So that's the ZTA. I also wanted to address the comments that were made by Mr. Dreyer and his neighbors. I've also spoken with most of you, as you know, but I am limited in the ability of what I can do in terms of waiving of fees. The City Council adopted a resolution that was very clear in what was required to waive fees for anybody whose home was destroyed by the Woolsey fire. And the resolution specifically says that a resident had to prove primary residency by providing a government-issued document that had the address of the owner at the time of the fire. And so that's what I'm bound by. And obviously, the council sets the policy, and I just carry that out. And so without further direction from the council, even though Mr. Dreyer's neighbors, many of whom I know, and I've gotten to know Mr. Dreyer, I'm sure that it's all accurate. I just don't have the power with what the council authorized to do that. So that would take further action by the council to change that resolution and adopt a different resolution that waives some of the requirements. And then for the speakers who brought up items that are related to the upcoming budget, we're continuing to monitor and do forecasting of our budget. And the public hearing for the budget will come back before the City Council on June 8th, and that the council and the members of the public can discuss adding items, taking items out, and giving staff direction on what you would like us to prioritize or not. We just brought forward some baseline ideas and suggestions when we brought the budget forward. But obviously, the council is the body that sets the decisions and priorities, and we will do whatever you ask us to do within the resources and limited staff time that's currently available. So moving on to some other subjects, I do want to share that residents who are voters will be getting a vote-by-mail ballot for the November 3rd election in the mail. The county is changing how they are doing this. You used to only get a vote-by-mail ballot if you had requested one. Now every registered voter will get one, and you can vote by mail if you choose to. And the goal there is to limit the number of people going into vote centers. I also wanted to let anybody know, if you're interested in getting a home ignition zone assessment, we have resumed those activities, and Jerry Vandomurolin is available to conduct those. He'll be conducting them with proper social distancing and safety measures. And you can go to malibu city.org/fire safety to make an appointment. Because as we know, even though we're in the middle of this pandemic, fire season is right behind or right in front of us, coming down the pike. And so we want to make sure that everybody has conducted their brush clearance and is properly prepared for that season. In terms of fire rebuilds, our planning staff, while most of them are working remotely, have been very busy processing applications to date since the pandemic started. We've had 22 new projects for rebuilds accepted, 24 approvals issued. And since the fire, since 2018, we have had 500 rebuild applications that have been approved through planning for a combination of new single-family residences or other structures on 300 separate parcels. So really, kudos to our planning staff for that great work. And then our building safety staff also have been extremely busy, and we hit the 100 numbers. So we have 100 building permits that have been issued for Woolsey rebuilds. So I'm very proud to be able to announce that tonight. We still have two homes completed, quite a few more about ready to be done. And we have one multifamily apartment building that has also received its building permits. A couple of projects coming up. Caltrans will be doing some surfacing projects in the shoulder area along PCH, near Cross Creek, Malibu Road, Seavista Drive, Zuma View Place, Cavalieri, and Morning View Drive. There will not be any lane impacts to this work, but they will be working along the shoulder. And then starting on May 15th, Southern California Edison will be doing some coating of metal utility poles in Malibu Canyon. Two of the poles are located in the city limits, and that project is expected to last about two weeks. The county of Los Angeles Department of Public Works is also doing some work in the Encinal Canyon area on the water system. These are improvements that will require to help some of those residents be able to rebuild and have adequate fire flow. And so the streets that will be impacted in that area are Vista del Prisus, Avenida de la Encinal, Encinal Canyon Road, Villa Vienta, and Vista de los Andes. I'm sorry if I said that one wrong. And construction hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And last, but definitely not least, our temporary skate park project is proceeding along very well. The asphalt is done, and this week they'll be starting on the site fencing. And the equipment portion of the project should be starting in the next couple of weeks. And fingers crossed that we'll be done with that project in early summer. So hopefully that coincides with when some of the stay-at-home orders get lifted, and we can all celebrate that together. So that concludes my remark report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Riva, council members, any questions? Okay.
Mayor, I think that you're muted.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Riva. Council members, any questions? Okay, we will move on to item 2C, Council Member Reports. Rick, would you like to go first?
Sure. Just like Jefferson, I got approximately 300 emails on 3B7. Just want to briefly address those and say that I was very impressed with, they were, for the most part, unique emails. They weren't just a cut and paste of one person. There were some common themes, but they were very well thought out. And even the ones that were very ardent and passionate in their position, they were tactfully delivered. And I thought, I was very impressed. Whoever was organizing that did a great job. And so I'm hoping that we can harness that potential energy for the ultimate solution to this very significant problem when the time comes. And I thank everybody for taking the time to express themselves. It makes a big difference. We do read them all. I was very impressed with the volume, and it almost seemed like there was some hootsuite thing dropping them like every minute or so into my emails. It was pretty funny. But thank you very much for all of that. I just want to comment on some of the things that the people said. Riva, maybe you can address some of those things about the courthouse and the homeless thing and talk, and when I'm done here, and address some of those questions that people had. E. Barry Haldeman, thank you very much for bringing that SB 1090 to our attention. Those kind of things, there's so much going on out there in the real world, or in the rest of the world. And sometimes these things can slip past us. And I think that one does have some applicability to people who live along the coast. So maybe we could get smart on that. And once you send that to us, we'll review it. So thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. And that really is all that I have to say. And I really appreciate all the speakers tonight coming and speaking. And once again, everybody who wrote a nice email, explained their position thoroughly and succinctly, those things make a huge difference. And we never do things in secret here in Malibu.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, Skylar, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you, Karen. Well, I guess, Riva, why don't you address the questions that Rick had real quick, and then I'll go?
I'm still believe his question was regarding the use of the old courthouse as a temporary shelter. And that is a location that has been discussed many times in public as a potential to provide some temporary nighttime shelter for those people experiencing homelessness. I have met with folks from the county about it. There are some complications to that site in terms of upgrades that need to be done to it, and the county is looking at what those upgrades are. But again, there's obviously no decision that was made to that in any way. And currently, our budget does not include any funds that would be necessary to do any of those upgrades. So we're again just sort of in a waiting period until we're able to meet in public and have a full, robust discussion. What the council asked me and asked staff to do was to collect information, and we're still in that process of gathering all the information that's needed. And we'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you, Riva. I had a Clean Power Alliance meeting last Thursday it was. I don't really have much to report on that other than we're bracing for people potentially not paying their bills during this COVID time that we're going through right now. But that hasn't been really affecting the CPA much. And we continue to deliver a lot of very green power to our community and over a million customers in the LA area and Ventura. Like Rick and I think everybody else, Karen, Mikey, and Jay, that I also received a lot of emails as well as some phone calls and some text messages and whatnot in regards to looking at Zuma for a safe overnight parking program. I think at this point, based on the feedback we received, I think everyone's pretty adamantly against that. So we'd have to circle back and look at a different area. But I also realize the complications in regards to our parking issues on the highway. And if we want to alleviate those, then we're going to have to figure something out according to the state, if they are going to grant us the parking restrictions that we want. So we all have to be mindful of that. I think that's a complicated thing. I don't think anyone has an exact solution for homelessness. And but our priority has to be keeping our residents of our community safe. And I think that that's a priority for everyone. So none of your comments fell on deaf ears, and I do appreciate everyone for taking the time to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. Jefferson, would you like to go? I'm muted.
There we go. Okay, unmuted by host. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Start out with responding to Judy, the Environmental Commission. I think it's valuable. We did vote for it. Skylar and I are running the committee. the the committee and uh we look forward to that. It's uh just about when we find time and and energy within the staff to create this. We did promise it to the community and I think we owe it to the community, uh at least to get something more substantial before Skylar and I leave office. Uh, on the view shed issue with the Drummonds and the Minskys, um if we had an ombuds office, um, this could be handled by the ombuds office uh through a uh middle party, not somebody from the city, but somebody from uh Pepperdine's Strauss Institute of Dispute Resolution. Uh, uh, Hamish Patterson uh on the Norm Hotel. Well, once again, uh, there there are a lot of details. Thank you for pointing them out. Uh, we have Norm always to help us out. He does help us out in any way he can, many ways. Uh, I think we look to his donations to find a place for the public benefit, not anybody else's benefit. Thank you for the comment, though. Um, on the comments that Rick had made about reading the emails on the housing on three B seven, since we're not going to agendize it, we're not going to be able to hear from all the people that were going to zoom in on it. I just want to let you know that if you can see this list, this is how many people emailed me and their names. I wrote it down because I thought we were going to be talking about it. It's over three hundred, three hundred and twelve to be exact. There was one interesting comment um from uh somebody, Kevin Klein, the potential antidote for our for our homeless situation and the problem we have finding a location to accommodate what all the people in the city wish to do is accommodate our homeless in some fashion. I think it was Kevin Klein. He had indicated in his email the potential of a a site that had been reviewed by some of the local residents here down at Topanga. And I was wondering if we could get some kind of consensus to approach the property owner, California State Parks on one side and county on the other side. That might be something in the future that we could address, and I'm hoping that uh he'll get back to me with his proposal. Once again, um, thank you, and I want to also mention that what Rick said about the comments, this was not cut and paste. This was real Malibu talking to their electeds, and I appreciate the temperature of what was commented and how it was done. And uh, that's a good way to run a campaign because it was done well. Uh, thank you very much, Karen.
Councilmember Wagner, if I might just jump in for a moment, um, there are uh several locations outside of the city boundary uh that are owned by California State Parks, and I did uh approach it with uh that agency, and at this time they're not interested in uh pursuing any of those discussions. So um, I'm aware of all the vacant sites uh anywhere around and in our city, and I have them in the list for the council to consider. And those will be brought forward uh when we discuss this uh at at uh together.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, Mikey.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, yeah, thank you to all the public speakers. Uh, it's a good turnout on a Zoom call. Um, almost a little bit tricky, and thanks to the two people that had to circle back around um and figured it out. So I'm glad we got everyone. That's been a worry of mine that we've seen have lost a few people along the way in past meetings, but we got sixteen out of sixteen, I believe. So that's excellent. All good comments. Most of them have been covered. Um, a few notes, um a lot of people bringing up David Dyer's situation. It is appearing that that is unintentional. I would like it if the city council would entertain looking at a small language tweak because you know, the idea, the guy's house burned down and he's clearly a Malibu resident from everything I've seen and the people that have vouched for him. So I I it's, you know, that was the whole point, uh was for people that burned down in his twelve hundred and fifty square foot house. It's just doesn't feel right to me. Um. As far as everything environmental, I hear, I hear you. We have time till the budget's done. Um. I promise to look through it. I promise to push these things forward. I heard what Jefferson said. I heard what the speaker said. Keon, Judy, um, thank you very much. Um, the fee for view preservation, that's an interesting one. Um, I will talk with, I'd like to talk with staff offline and understand it a little better. Um. I don't know what's involved, I'll be honest. Um, and probably nobody does since apparently no one's ever actually filed one. So that's, that is an interesting one. Um, I'm curious about myself. Um, I think, let me look at the other. Hamish, I love you. I think you misunderstood my stance on the hotel, but to go into it would give away part of my strategy. So on that negotiation, so you and I can talk about that later if you want. Um. I'll just leave that one alone. As far as following the constitution, you know, doing the absolute best I can, as I understand it, the county health director works for the county, which is the elected board of supervisors, which is also under the elected governor of the state of California. So I'm not so sure your analysis is right. Um. If if so, that would be scary. So, but thank you for bringing all of that up. Barry, of course, thank you for being our eagle eye on so many things. S B ten ninety, I did not know about that one. I look forward to reading more about it. A couple of other comments here on the homeless situation just in general as pretty much the person who started spearheading that we need to do something in our city so we can find the balance between helping people and move them out of homeless and protecting our community. Um. I think all along from day one, the number one thing we wanted to do was really, really realize how much public outreach we we need and that 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 remains because it's a really complex subject. It really is daunting in many ways, and I honestly, I don't think there's any win-wins. There's just trying to do the best we can in a very tough situation and an evolving situation. So I really look forward to more robust public input. The January twenty-ninth meeting went well. There was probably close to a couple hundred people there. Um, it was very educational in a lot of ways, a lot of great speakers. Clearly, clearly, we did not reach out enough. Um, and there was no intent of Zuma surprising anyone. And I think too, I I think I I engage a huge amount of people in conversation. Thank you. Thank you so much to everybody. I think we all learned a few things. I learned some great things from the people I corresponded with or and um a number of people commented that they learned a lot too from our conversation and that some things on social media were inaccurate. So go, but go be surprised there that something might be inaccurate on social media. Um, I've certainly fallen for it before too. Um, moving on from that, one thing that struck me that I've been dealing with a few people in Santa Monica is as our business is trying to reopen, which is going to come slow, um, I'm going to give a special shout out for, well, really for restaurants, maybe some retail too, but I wonder if we should look at temporarily easing the outdoor dining restrictions where it makes sense and where it's possible. I know one thing, when I go sh- you know, I don't go shopping. I have underlying health conditions that my wife pretty much does it. The one place I go is the Fig Ranch because it's outdoor, beautiful produce. And it's like, I feel very safe there. You can really space out. So I can imagine that if once we're able to, you know, go out and support our local restaurants, maybe we could consider something just if possible, I don't, I know a lot of our locations don't allow it, but some sort of way to be a little more outdoors, um, which I think would be a benefit. And the last thing I want to bring up is I continue to be concerned with particularly some of the problem S T Rs that we have, short-term rentals. And it seems like from what I've seen, some places are advertising to try and be group escapes, and that's disturbing. So I I have to ask Riva a question, what she answered, and I apologize. Am I overwhelmed dealing with a lot of issues? Um, you got a hold of the Coastal Commission on this issue. Could you? I don't want to get it wrong. Could you recite for me what the Coastal Commission said about being able to do a temporary ban of some sort on problem S T Rs?
No, I floated the question by the staff at the Coastal Commission um that um I mentioned that there were members of our community that had asked if um we could institute a temporary ban on short-term rentals during the pandemic, and um the response back was that there weren't any um stay-at-home orders that prohibited uh short-term rentals, and therefore their opinion it was a an allowed activity. Um, and that if that was something that the city council wanted uh to do, that it would have to uh go through the Coastal Commission for their final approval, even as a temporary ban. Um, just to give you a little context in that, um, anything that uh the city or any other entity has done during this pandemic time um that changes uh anything under the Coastal Act or limits coastal access. So for example, the closure of Bluffs Park or the temporary no parking signs along the coast or along Westford Beach, we've had to submit that in writing as a request to the Coastal Commission. Um, so far they have approved all of those requests, but the indication that I got back regarding the short-term rentals is that they would not see that as something that could be banned uh during this time due to the pandemic. Uh, that being said, if the council would like uh to do, see if there's consensus to bring back an item, more than happy to follow up with whatever you'd like on that.
Okay, thanks. Is there is there option to explore? I think the main concern tends to be houses that seem to be advertising themselves as party houses, which I know, I think ten is the limit, but that's a lot. I don't think most S T Rs have ten. I hope not. Um, could, could you remind us what the public can do if they're encountering something dangerous at an S T R that's scaring them because it just seems to be isolated to certain locations at this point, like Malibu Road and a couple others.
Well, first of all, um, you know, I would ask that if anybody has seen that going on in their neighborhood to please contact me. Um, I'm always available, certainly by email. Um, so the sooner that I know about it, the the sooner we can assist. Um, obviously, parties are not an allowed activity um in a short-term rental. Um, it limits the number of guests that can be in there to fifteen and anything over that requires um a permit. And so uh people who are doing that are obviously in violation of the city's municipal code. Um, residents can also call the Last Hill Sheriff's Station um for enforcement regarding the noise ordinance. Um, and then we also have a one call to City Hall, which is uh the main number at City Hall, three one oh four five six two four eight nine. And if you dial extension three one one twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, you'll be able to speak to a person who answers and they will direct that call or that uh problem to a city staff member. And that goes for not only things that have to do with short-term rentals, but any problem within the city that you see. Um, please uh use the one call to City Hall function.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you kind of filling in the blanks there. Um. My last comment is, as I do hope we can find a path forward to protect our community um in terms of honestly being overrun by RVs living on the highway and and other issues that which fall under homelessness. I I I I feel greatly for the people that live by Last Tunis and other impacted areas, although that obviously seems to be the worst. So uh not going to give up on trying to find a positive path forward that makes sense there. And uh the last couple of days with uh all the comments related to Zuma, I think it's great that we're at least starting this conversation as a conversation the city really needs to have, as I think was Rick pointed out. Um, and um I look forward to engaging at it and thanks again to everybody and that would be it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, okay, I will echo what the other council members have said. Um. We all received a lot of communication, um mostly email, but some other forms of uh contact as well. Um, and yeah, exactly what Rick said. It it wasn't one of those cases where we received the same email that had been cut and pasted from a lot of people. It looked like there was a lot of um individual thought about it. So I appreciate that. Um, and I'm glad that we had consensus to continue the item, and I think it's important to do it in person. Um. I don't know when it'll be possible with um the uh prescribed uh phase one, two, three, and four. But um I would hope that with other issues that were really major to the community, we could host some well-publicized town hall meetings. Um, if a survey is appropriate, I'm not sure, uh but if it is, we can try that. Um, but I think this, this needs an in-person discussion and kind of open-ended opportunity uh for input, even beyond what we've had already. Um, as far as updates for myself, I've done what I believe many of us have done. I've been uh on the uh governor's uh updates, the county, uh Mayor Garcetti, even though he uh is the mayor of Los Angeles and doesn't have jurisdiction over us, he is in contact with mayors uh not only all over the country, but all over the world. And um the the forums we've been on with him as elected officials have been super informative, I thought. Um. Yeah, Barry Haldeman, thank you very much. I too was unaware of that. In fact, I made myself a note to call you tomorrow. So um. Yeah, that, thank you for just always being on the lookout for things that help this community and and other seaside communities as well. Um. As for the Topanga location, I think, you know, one challenge is um from my dealings so far with the county and the state, communities are being expected to find solutions within their own city. Uh, the easiest thing in the world is to say, yeah, let's put it in San Bernardino or Camarillo or someplace that's not here. Um, I don't think we have the ability to do that. Um, and as for Topanga, one of the one bit of feedback I got on one of the locations we inquired about was that there had been boulders that fell in that particular location, and it was deemed not safe for uh for any occupancy. Um. I have a question for Riva. Um. I realize that I believe it's both phase three and four, according to the governor. There is no timeline. There's no date set right now because that's going to depend on um the information that we get back as far as um public health, uh testing and and medical capacity, but um could we even begin to guess when the temporary no parking signs might come down?
Um, to the first part of your question, that's correct. Um, that the governor and then also the county have laid out kind of the reopening of everything in uh phases. Uh, so we're sort of in between phase one and phase two right now. Uh, the very beginning of phase two was the reopening of the county uh parks and trails and um obviously here in Malibu, uh there aren't county uh parks necessarily, but um uh state parks that open back up and everything except solstice. Um, and then uh moving forward into this week, that we'll see some uh reopening of certain activities along our beaches. Um, but uh everything else in terms of the reopening, and I'm sorry, also of the stores that were able to reopen for curbside pickup. Um, but everything else that both the county and the state have laid out, um, and it's all available on uh the county website, if someone would like more information on it, are dependent on results of testing, and they have not established any specific dates of that. Um, the beaches, as I've mentioned, will start to do slight reopening on Wednesday. Um, so at the lots at this time have been slated to remain closed. Um, and I have been today and this afternoon speaking with um uh people in the county as well. people in the county as well, in the state to determine if we think we should lift those parking restrictions that are along Pacific Coast Highway. My concern is that we will have visitors coming out to the beaches. And if there's not parking available along the coast side, people will park in other areas and try to cross the highway, which could be really dangerous. So just trying to weigh all that out with the different agencies involved. So I'm happy to take any direction if the council would like to give that to me on that.
Okay, Skylar, I see you have a question and then I have a little bit more in my report. Go ahead.
Riva, in your conversations with the state and the county on that, I think it would probably be wise to get some of that ocean side of PCH parking available. You know, I'm looking forward to going back in the water and surfing and it's not going to be fun for people having to get just dropped off at the beach. I had somebody call me about that earlier saying, okay, well, you know, how my wife dropped me off, tell me to surf and then pick me up afterwards.
Yeah, that's, that's my gut reaction to it as well. Obviously, want to make sure that we're not overrun with visitors and crowds, but we also want those people who are coming to be able to use our amenities safely. So I think that's probably where we'll, we'll be headed after I talk to everybody tomorrow.
Okay. And then I have one other question and maybe I'm just getting ahead of myself, but I, I'm wondering, do we think parking restrictions on the highway would be lifted all at the same time or, or would they be area by area? And if so, do you have any idea for how those areas would be determined and in what order?
Again, those are conversations that I'm having mostly with the county, but certainly as well with state parks because of their beaches that are impacted. So I don't have a clear answer on that. I think it'll probably be area by area, sort of how it closed. And obviously, if we start to see problems, there could be some going back to more restrictive areas. But I think in the interest of public safety and to provide, you know, access to the beaches that are now going to be open, I think it would probably behoove everybody involved to lift what we can now. And then if there's issues, we can always close them back up. Am I answering your question properly? I'm not sure if I'm giving you the right information or not.
Yes. And then I have one other thought along the same lines. If parking lots, say, for example, at the pier or at Zuma remain closed, you know, it looks to me like people's option would pretty much be to either park on the highway. If the signs, you know, no parking signs had been removed or, as you said, park other places and, and cross the highway. So I just, I don't know if you have any information about parking lots being reopened by the county or the state?
And so to date, as of now, they haven't established a date on when those beach parking lots would reopen. What I have heard is that when they do start doing some sort of opening, it's going to only be a percentage of the lots that are opened up. So maybe they would open them first at 25% capacity. And the reason behind that is that they really want to limit the number of people who are coming into the parking lots and interacting with each other, parking close to each other, walking close to each other. And then the number of people who are on the sand, we all know what a crowded beach day looks like when the Zuma lot is at full capacity or any of the other areas. And so I think what they're trying to do is just limit the number of people who can actually be on the sand at a given time. But again, this is all rolling out kind of as we speak and could, is subject to change. And even within a day, I get, you know, a lot of different information. This is happening, that's not happening, this is happening. So I think they're, they're really trying to figure it out and do the right thing. And also just, I have heard that if there's some concern that the numbers of the cases go back up or there's issues with hospitalization rates, that they may actually close things back again. So I think as much as people can be outside and stay away from each other at the same time, the better off we'll all be in the long run.
Okay, thank you. Skylar, I see your hand up.
Riva, I would like to, if, if possible, if you can encourage them to open things up, I think in the interest of public safety, that that's very wise. And we obviously very much understand the caveat that if any of the, you know, there's a spike in the relative amount of cases or something like that, that those would be closed right away. But you know, in thinking about it, I think if you were to open, let's say you opened up the ocean side of parking on Zuma and come this Saturday, we have potential for, you know, probably some sketchy accidents at the least, if not some, as soon as that fills up, then people, what, they're going to park in our neighborhoods to go for a walk? I think that that, that could be also have a negative impact too. So if the county can get the lot open, I mean, Zuma is a very big place, even if it's a certain percentage of it. That seems like that would be a lot safer for, for everyone, our residents and the public.
I will certainly give that feedback to them. And I have been sharing as many concerns as I can with the county when I talk to them.
Okay, Mikey, please.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, wait.
We can't hear you, Mikey.
How about now?
Yep.
The magic of electronics. It's amazing. Sorry to circle back on this. I I do remain a little bothered that we unintentionally excluded Mr. Dryer. Is, is there? Will anyone come with me? I'm bringing this back to at least examine what we could do on that. Skylar? Can I get consensus to take a look at this? Okay, we have consensus. So we could agendize that, at least talk about it and, and see if there's some language that makes sense there because I think, I don't know, I just poor guy's house burned down.
Riva, do you have the authority within the existing language to do that or you would specifically need something? So bring something back to the camp the next meeting to clear that up.
Okay, no problem. I will bring something back.
Thanks for your help, everyone.
Okay, I think that concludes council comments. So let's move to the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor, item 3B4, 3B5, and 3B6 have been pulled.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items 3B4, 5, and 6.
Okay, do we have a second?
All second. And just a reminder, 3B7 is no moss.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items 3B4, 3B5, 3B6, and 3B7 has already been continued. So Heather, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yeah, give me just one second. Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So we are on item 3B4. And do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be happy to give a brief update on this. So the county Measure R funds, which are related to transportation projects. We have a long list of projects that the council previously authorized, one of which was a message highway sign that would allow the city to do a project that put up messaging signs along the highway. And when we developed the project concept, the county was also interested in doing similar signs in the canyon roads. And so we produced a project destruction that would do both highway signs along Pacific Coast Highway and in the canyons. Since that time, the county has informed us that they do not want to proceed with doing signs in the canyons due to view issues. And then also the already existing Pacific Coast Highway Signal Synchronization Project, which is in the design phase, actually includes message signs in that project. And so at this time, we don't feel that there is a need for a standalone messaging sign project and that we would recommend that we basically unencumber those funds and assign them to other projects. And so this is a matter that needs to go back to Metro so that they can approve it. So that's the item before you tonight. I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any public speakers? Public speakers on 3B4?
Heather? Sorry about that. Give me just one second. We have one public speaker, Kevin Zinger.
Public speakers have three minutes.
Kevin Zinger?
By any chance muted? Unintentionally?
I missed the public comment as well earlier.
I missed what you said, Skylar.
I believe he missed the public comment as well. We did not hear from him. So it doesn't sound like he's there.
I don't see him here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item 3B4. And I think it's actually a shame that the county did not get behind putting those signs in. There's a lot of areas where they could put them in. They're not really affecting the view because I think they would be very beneficial to the public.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Heather, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item 3B5. And is there a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the staff report on this as well. So for those of you who are on council in 2018, you'll recall that we authorized funding in the amount of $42,000, $42,500,000 for the acquisition of 29 acres of vacant land. And at that time, we used a combination of certificates of participation, general fund, undesignated reserves, and we also were able to use Measure R and Measure M funds. The county graciously worked with us to help us identify enough funds from Measure R and Measure M. But the way that those funding sources work is there are cycles of when the funds become available. And we were about $700,000 short in what was available at the time that we needed to make the acquisition. So the county allowed us to use a different source of county funds from Proposition C in order to close the transaction in time with the understanding that when the Measure R funds and M funds circled back around in those cycles, that we would then make the other pot of funds whole. So it's, it's kind of a shell game. We didn't know back in 2018 that there was a specific agreements that we needed to execute to complete this part of the funding. And so at this time, it's basically a cleanup matter before you to authorize me to move forward with these agreements so that we can finish off all the paperwork that is pending with the county. And really stepped up and helped us to be able to make that acquisition. So that's, it sounds a lot more complicated than it is. But basically, we just need to get the paperwork in line for Metro. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Do we have speaker slips, Heather?
Again, it was Kevin Zinger, so.
Should we try one more time just for the record?
I don't see him in the participant list.
I'm making a motion to approve item 3B5.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Heather, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yep.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 3V6. Could we please have a staff report on 3V6?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Soger, Assistant City Manager. I will give a brief report for this item. Every year, the city council approves the use of the set-aside funds for the Malibu Library, the county library. There, Malibu is lucky enough to be in the position that additional property tax comes in over and above the cost of running the library day to day. And the city has been able to work with the county under an MOU to direct the use of that funding. In the current year, we had a very, a, a set of funding that you can see in the report. We did not undertake any, any sort of major projects, again, as we were recovering from the Woolsey fire. On, on March 9th, we had a meeting of the library subcommittee to discuss the recommendations for expenditures for the next fiscal year. Recommendations coming from the subcommittee were to continue the level of funding from the prior year, which included funding a deferred maintenance reserve, funding the teen librarian, extra security guards, supplies for the Boys and Girls Club, some funding for programs in the county library system for underserved facilities. And additionally adding funding for library-related supplies and books for the Malibu Public Schools. In addition to that, there is some, there are some funds that have been unspent in the current year. And the recommendation was to allocate $12,000 to the Malibu Public Schools in the current year to help them as well. And that is where the recommendation stands.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Do we have any public speaker slips?
We have one speaker, John Lanza.
Okay, thank you for hearing me. I did go to the March 9th meeting. I was the only public attendee. And the, I know Karen, you and Jefferson were leading that committee. What I'd like to point out is that list was made before all the pandemic closures happened. And it's a substantial amount of money, which is the city's money, which gets allocated to the county to spend. And in this list, there are a lot of things that are out of date. So I'm going to recommend that you, you please have another library subcommittee meeting and review this. I just like to point out that we're spending $100,000 to extend the library hours and libraries close. There are no hours. We're spending $260,000 to have guards on the library and it's closed. And it's not appropriate to use those guards to guard county facilities at the courthouse. And this is specifically for the library. Also, there's $100,000 for the speaker series, which is not active. And we have an outreach librarian for $125,000. And there's no more outreach. So I think that we do need to support some of these programs, but we have to have the library subcommittee review them and decide how much of that money is actually necessary for the coming fiscal year. And, and scale it back because this is really our money. It's not the county's money. It's our money. It's our tax funds and thanks to Pam Ulick. It's our tax funds and thanks to Pam Ulick, it's assigned to us and, and we can allocate it. Um, if we can cut a couple hundred thousand dollars out of this in funds that are not going to be used. Uh, they're definitely not going to extend hours when it's closed. Uh, things like that. And I, I, I would like to leave it up to the library subcommittee to review this, but to take old data and spend a million dollars without reviewing it, I think is not good governance. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment, mayor? So a couple of things, the library may not be open, but the library staff is currently still working. They are in the building. Um, and my understanding is that they do have security guards there. Um, additionally, some of the comments about these funds, for example, the speaker series, if we're not having speaker series because we're closed and we can't have gatherings, that money would not be spent and that money still stays in the account. It doesn't go anywhere. It gets carried over into future years. Um, so in terms of those things, they wouldn't be happening in, at this time, the money doesn't go anywhere. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that.
It's also, um, helpful to note that the, the amounts that are being authorized are a maximum amount. It doesn't mean that they get spent. They only get spent if that activity happens. Um, so I just, uh, as Lisa was saying, that funds aren't spent, they just sit in the set aside funds. And we certainly can come back with an item to the library subcommittee, uh, when the stay-at-home order is lifted to review everything again with the county. Um, but, uh, per our MOU, we are required to authorize, um, every year, the spending of these funds. And so, uh, we do need to get something authorized, and this was the recommendation that came forward to the subcommittee. We can certainly bring back another item, uh, when we get back in the summer.
I just have a clarifying question. Uh, uh, sorry, Jefferson, just one second. Um, with the stay-at-home orders and, and, uh, things like the speaker series, um, being, uh, suspended, uh, would there be a chance for us to roll that money into the general fund?
No, not at all. So the, the way the library set aside funds work is, um, the county collects a portion of taxpayer funds, uh, that goes through our property tax, um, into a specific county fund. This money is never comes to the city. Um, uh, we were able to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the county. It gives us some say and have, be able to have requests to the county on what we can use those funds for, augment our library services, but the money never comes to the city of Malibu. So if something's not spent, it sits with the county. Currently, the, uh, balance of those set aside funds is over ten million dollars. Um, so any unspent funds in the quote-unquote budget that you would be approving remain with the county, uh, for future services.
Okay, thank you. Jefferson, you've had your hand up?
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate, uh, being the other member of the subcommittee, uh, library subcommittee. Appreciate this moment. Um, I believe Speaker Maza was, uh, had concerns that have some merit. Uh, we are not going to be spending as much, but once again, as was mentioned, whatever is not spent and not designated spent, we do keep an accounting of. And that does work to our benefit that we do get the remnants to put forward to build our own library in the future, which was something that you and I have talked about in the past. And that's set aside fund. We can keep building that set aside fund, keep accruing, keep building, and hopefully we have a library in the future at the West End. Typically, we kind of don't do budget here and now. You and I do it when we're in our subcommittee meeting. But, uh, I think if we are not going to spend it, we can kind of get an appraisal from the city manager that we did save money on the speaker series, uh, the outreach library and things like this. We can get that at the next meeting that you and I have. We can say to somebody like Speaker Maza, we saved money here, here, and here, and it goes into that fund that Riva just mentioned that we're at ten plus. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, um, I, I'm comfortable with moving ahead to approve the set aside funds. Uh, we, we know that certain activities are suspended, uh, but that the funds will stay, stay with the library. So, um, I, I'm fine making a motion to move ahead with it.
Second.
Um, Karen, I have a comment. Skylar. Um, I just, I think it's silly for us to be spending money on the security guards during this time if the building's closed. I don't know how that's received with the public that, I mean, what are the security guards doing? Are they just making sure the staff can walk in through the back entrance of the building when it's locked to the public on the front? I just don't understand that at all.
So, um, uh, Councilmember Peak, I, I don't believe those decisions are something that we actually get to make. Um, that once the library has hired those security guards, um, they're there, um, they're employed, they have a contract with them. Um, I have seen them out there. Um, we have had, um, a fair amount of homeless individuals, um, in that area. We also have the day labor, uh, exchange going on there, and so they are interacting with those folks. Um, we can certainly reach out to the county and ask, um, if there's any way of decreasing their presence there. Um, but hopefully they'll be able to open the library up sooner than later, and we do want them there when they come back. So, but we can certainly ask.
And, and I would just point out that these funds are for the next fiscal year. This is for the fiscal year that starts July one. So I would imagine a, as the county's starting to look at opening up facilities, by the next fiscal year, there, there would be some kind of presence in the library.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jefferson, please.
Thank you once again, mayor. Uh, so I, as I understand it, if the teen librarian or schools don't open on time and we don't spend that money, it does go back into the, the general account fund for our future. So, um, we can always get that accounting from the city manager or from the assistant city manager and look at the details of what is actually being spent and what has not been spent, and then make our decision for the future as well. So I'm happy to hear that if we don't spend it or it doesn't get spent as per the proper department, that it does go into the general fund for our future library.
Not the city's general fund. It goes back to the county's library fund, just to be clear.
I under, I understand. Thank you for the clarification, but that is still designated for the city of Malibu.
That's correct.
So do we have a motion in a second? Is that correct?
Yeah.
That is correct. That's for approval of staff's recommendation, right?
Yes. Thank you, Trevor. Okay, um, Heather, Trevor, do you need to read it or, uh, can we do a roll call?
We can do a roll call if we have a, we had a motion and a second for a staff's recommendation here, so we're good.
Mayor Ferrer.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yes.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and in the agenda, uh, item four A has been continued to a date uncertain. So we will move to item six A. And, um, do we have a staff report?
Uh, yes. Uh, good evening, council. This is, this is Rob DeBoe, the Public Health Director. Um, in June of two thousand seventeen, the city council set, uh, the wastewater and recycled water rates for the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. And when we set those rates, we, um, use assumptions to set the cost for the operation and maintenance of that facility. Uh, we use assumptions because we didn't know the actual cost to, for electricity, treatment costs, chemicals, and such. Um, during the last two years, uh, we've had some, had to use some, we, we did a general fund transfer to make up some of those differences between the actual cost of running the facility and, um, our, our assumed rates. And with the understanding that those future, future, um, or the general funds used to cover those costs will be, um, paid back with, with some, uh, with the revised wastewater rates or, or if there's any savings left over from, uh, that year from, from the operation and maintenance. So, um, so now the, um, staff is seeking kind of direction on, uh, from council on a proposed water and, uh, wastewater and recycled water rates. And, uh, tonight we have a presentation from Sanjay Ghar from Attilas to go over those, um, options and kind of go over the costs associated with the upcoming wastewater and recycled water rates.
Thank you, Rob. Um, honorary mayor, city council, staff and public. I'm elected to do our presentation associated with the wastewater and recycled rates. Just want to confirm that everyone can hear me. All right. Thank you very much. So let me get started. Um, through my presentation, if there's any questions you have, um, please let me know and, um, we can discuss them. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So the agenda today is to talk about the goals and objective of a high, of a wastewater rate study. Um, as Rob mentioned, talk about the past, what be, um, estimated the cost would be, and then the projected, uh, budget and why those cost increases were they incurred. Talk about equivalent dwelling units. That's, uh, the charge that we charge to the different customers based on EDU or equivalent dwelling unit. Um, then talk about how in the past there has been a deficit in this fund, so there has been a loan from the general fund. And talk about options associated with pay repayment of that loan. Um, to show you a couple of different options associated with the wastewater rates and get your input on which option is best suitable for our community, and then talk about recycled rates and the next steps. Next slide, please. So the goal and objective of a wastewater rate study is to develop a defensible, equitable rate, uh, for both wastewater and recycled. Um, these rates fall under Prop two eighteen, so there needs to be a logic or methodology behind the rates. Um, there will be administrative record that we will develop, um, based on input that we receive today that shows the math behind these rates. What we use in order to determine the cost or the price associated with this service is we look at budgetary information, project out budgets for three years, look at the number of individuals that will be utilizing the systems and their demand on the systems, and that's the EDU count or equivalent dwelling units. And then we also take into account the general loan, general fund loan repayment, the two-year payments and any other repayments in the future that may occur. Next slide, please. So, um, as Rob mentioned, we, um, developed budgets for estimated for fiscal year nineteen. Um, right here, you see the contractor cost, pass-through cost, rec. Cost. Um, we estimated that to be one point four million dollars. That was based on the best available information at the time when we're doing that study. Um, cost, as Rob has mentioned, has been higher. Um, and I'll, in the next slide, I'll talk about those different cost increases and where they occurred. Um, but in the, uh, city's projected fiscal year, this fiscal year, it's estimated to be one point eight million dollars. The proposed city budget for twenty twenty-one, the next fiscal year, will be one point nine million dollars. Um, of course, one of the, next slide, please, um, will be why did those cost increase occurred and why did they occur? The first was the electrical treatment costs. Um, I have those costs increased there between what, um, we estimated and what occurred, um, between estimated city proposed. Um, electrical costs were higher, treatment costs were higher. This is a, uh, smaller plant, unusual plant in a lot of ways, so we didn't know about these costs. The insurance cost was significantly higher than we anticipated. Um, so that was a cost. Water quality monitoring is also a concern because we are injecting the water once treated into the groundwater. Um, and so there's requirement of cost associated with that, and then some other miscellaneous costs. So all those different cost components added up the difference to a little bit under a half a million dollars. So projections of cost for fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-three, which is what we're looking at for the next three years for considerations for rate adoptions. Today's just a preliminary analysis. We weren't, not considering asking city councils to adopt them. Um, but in the future meeting, we will. Um, where we're projecting here is a one point nine, one five, two hundred thou, two hundred dollars fiscal year twenty-one, and then you can see the increase. The increases are associated with a two point five percent cost associated with the contract. And then a six percent, um, increase for the other cost increases, which is what we've seen historically. EDUs additions, uh, we did have one development that occurred during this time period. That's with Whole Foods, as you may know. Um, that increased the EDU count by thirty-three, so we have three hundred and thirty-five EDUs. One of the challenges, um, with the study is sort of what we anticipate future development to occur. How many will be developed in phase one? We know there's six parcels that can, that's under development, but we don't know the timing of that development. And then, of course, with COVID nineteen, that created even more uncertainty now. And so there's a lot of uncertainty about the timing. If those development does occur, that does increase the revenues associated with this fund and assist debt from a financial perspective. The current revenues, um, so the current rate is four hundred dollars per EDU. Um, so the current revenues, and there's some math there, is one point six million dollars times twelve, times the number of EDUs. The general fund, um, was needed for a loan for fiscal year nineteen and this fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty. Um, the total estimate of that loan is the estimate's three hundred and five thousand dollars. And I show you the breakdown of the loan estimates, uh, for fiscal year nineteen and projected for twenty twenty and the interest earning where we would, we would want to get be paid because of that opportunity cost of, of not gaining two percent. Um, and so any projected rates need to take into account this loan and how to repay it is one of the discussions and policies that I'm going to be asking for your input. So this is sort of the financial situation with this fund. We have the fiscal years above. We have the current revenues at one point six. As I mentioned, we have the O and M expense, which I explained, and then you have the deficit. And as you can see, the deficit, um, increased over time because of the O and M expense increasing. We have the beginning balance, as I mentioned, um, which is negative, which is that loan from the general fund. And then as the deficit increases over time, the ending balances gets more and more significant. Uh, a two percent, um, interest earning is included in the one hundred and one, one hundred and seven thousand dollars, but not in the other costs associated with that internal loan. So some kind of loan repayment needs to be dealt with, given the situation. So the options are twofold that we want, like to present to you, and within these options, there's some variance. Um, the first is that we could increase the rates to cover the cost and repay the general fund right up. That's one option. Second option is, given the situation we're in as a community, um, is to further rate increase for one fiscal year and then increase it the following fiscal year. And then I want to show you the implications associated with that. So option one is to cover the rates. Um, so the current rate, as I mentioned, is four hundred dollars, um, and thirty-four cents. If we just want to meet the budgetary increase and not to deal with the general fund, we would have to increase that to four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, the general fund loan, um, you know, our recommendation is, is to do that loan over three to five years. Of course, you don't need to do it over one year or two years, so spread that, that cost. And there's some options associated, you know, there's some implications associated with that. The repayment of the general fund could also be deferred. So there's another wrinkle here. We could do an option once to maybe defer that repayment just, um, out. And then that repayment would add twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents if we did that, uh, a deferral repayment. Option two is basically we, we defer the rate increase for one fiscal year and then increase it the following. If we do that, then additional, because of this deficit that we are experiencing, the general fund, we would need to borrow additional three hundred and four thousand dollars from the general fund. So as I mentioned, the current loan's already three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So this total outstanding balance would double basically to six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that's a concern, and, and unfortunately, I'm giving you two scenarios here that are not, that are sort of challenging to deal with. That's why we're asking for your input. So the next slide is basically a summary and, um, of all the different options. So first, my apologies for a lot of information here, but it sort of gives us the bookend of the different options that we're hoping to get your input on. So let me walk you through these different tables and numbers. So option one, deferral payment. Um, so this scenario here is the current rate is four hundred and thirty-four seven. We increase it to meet the budgetary increase to four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, and we don't deal with the repayment of the loan until twenty twenty-four. We just push it out during that time period. We just push it out, during that time period, some EDU growth may occur, um, if that does occur, that would help with that loan repayment. Um, option number one, three-year repayment, is that we could. Do the budgetary increase and do a three-year payment of that general fund. That general fund amount, and then there's some asterisks here, as you can see, with the two star, two, um, asterisks. Is twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents is the loan amount per EDU per month. The next option is we can do is a five-year repayment, and that drops it down to sixteen dollars and forty cents, that loan repayment. Um, so the fee now is four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents, and I'm looking at fiscal year twenty-one, next fiscal year. And then you can see the, the following fiscal years. So the next option, um, given the situation we are all experiencing with COVID nineteen. Is option two, which is basically keeping the rates as they are. Using the general fund for this gap and then doing a repayment of that. Over three years, so the next year, next fiscal year, the rate will be the same at four hundred and thirty-four cents. But then, because as I mentioned, that loan amount would double. To over six hundred thousand dollars, that means that the loan amount would of course double, so now it's fifty-five dollars and three cents over three years. And then, as you can see in option two, same scenario now, spread out that loan amount to five years, so now it's thirty dollars and forty-four cents. Of course, within these ranges, there are some other options that you could do. But I'm giving you sort of the bookends of what we could do, we could do something in between these two options too, um, as a bridge, um, to get to the right place. So, um, we're definitely, uh, maybe, and then, well, let's go to the next slide, um, so next slide is the recycling rate. That less controversial, just slight increase, as you may remember, recycled, cut, everyone who's a wastewater customer. Does get allotment of recycled water based on how much has you charged to the system, they've been based on EDUs. Um, so that's free water that they get, they have access to, uh, once they go above their allotment, then they have to pay the operating cost, that's a. Two dollars and twenty-three cents of fiscal year twenty-one, and then if you're outside the assessment district, you haven't contributed at all to the system. And you want that recycled water, then you have to pay more, and that's a five dollars and eighty-one cents, and I'm showing you a comparison of what, um, the district twenty-nine charges. Malibu customers for its, um, rates, so you have a comparison for irrigation. So maybe we can go back one slide to slide fourteen, and, um, then I want to ask which. Direction would you feel comfortable moving forward with, um, based on your input, then we would develop an administrative record. Um, put this into a document and then we would present, and then the city would issue a Prop two eighteen notice. Send it out to the, the individuals within the civic service center area, um, and then, um, we would have the public hearing. In July.
Okay, thank you very much, Skyler.
Do we have any public comments on this, Carrie, or Heather?
We do have one, Drew Newman, would you like to take that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Drew Newman. Is the speaker present?
It sounds like he's not, uh. At the device.
Okay. All right, um, Skyler, did you have a comment?
Um, well, personally, I don't think the, the city should be in the business of continuing to give loans, uh, even at the two percent return rate. Uh, in regards to this, I think it's hard though with what's going on right now, but, um. I think it'd be wise, I would be curious to hear from Riva. You know, how this works into our budget with fronting these costs for a longer period of time. Um, and or deferring them, but, uh, I think I would lean towards some. Either option one with a three-year or five-year.
I don't really think that there's any significant impact on the budget, um, it's really just a fun transfer between the general fund and the wastewater treatment. Fund, um, at this time, um, as was explained, uh, by our consultant, that the cost came in significantly higher. That we had originally, um, assumed, um, there was obviously a lot of unknowns, uh, when we, um, started the plant. Um, what I see happening is that as, uh, phase two comes on, those, uh, costs are gonna go down significantly. Um, so I'm, I'm not terribly concerned about it, um, but we, you know, had to bring this forward to the council because obviously. Um, outside of, of my purview of approval, um, so I don't really think there's a bad decision that you can make. And I don't think it doesn't have any impact on our upcoming budget or the funds that we have available or not available. Uh, to, to spend next year, so, um, hope that answered the question.
Did you, I mean, have you heard, I haven't heard from any property owners on this, in this area at all, I know that the city obviously owns property there, but have you heard from any property owners about this?
I have not, I don't know if, um, Rob has or not, but I personally have not.
Uh, yeah, I, I have not yet, I've heard from anybody.
Okay, well, I don't know if everybody else wants to comment on it, otherwise I'd make the motion.
Um, I, I, I agree with Skyler, I'll say that, um, I think option one's preferable. Um. I don't know. I agree, we, we don't want to push this out, um, even if it's not. Usually significant, uh, difference. Um.
Rob, what's your recommendation?
Um, well, I, I think, uh, we're, we're seeking, we're seeking the kind of council to kind of, to weigh in. Um, the kind of the COVID factor on the whole situation with the, it, these are all. Um, commercial development, and so, you know, they're, they're gonna have to ta- take time to come back and. And recover from the situation and all, and so that's why we kind of come up with all these different options on what we should do. And so we're just looking at council kind of give us guidance on which, which way to go, I mean, there's, there's a number of options. And, uh, just wanted to get your, what everyone's opinion.
Skyler.
So, just so that I understand this, like, and, and when this would be e- effective and whatnot. If we went with option one on a three-year repayment. That, their fees would not increase to the five hundred dollar number until what date? Until January twenty twenty-one? Or when would that, or can we just say this is what we would suggest, at this point is when we think that they should go up or we should start the repayment plan?
So these increases would occur on the property roll. Um, so we would put this on the county parcel, um, property roll in August, and then people would receive it on the property roll. For this coming up. Year, so you, you, you get those in two payments.
Okay, so I would make the suggestion that we do option one and. Go with the three-year repayment so that we can get this taken care of, because I'm also a little bit concerned if we have other. Any bigger expenses with this, that this could just, is gonna compound and just get larger.
Any comments from other council members, we have a motion?
Yeah, can I, I'd just like to get, because Riva said it didn't really matter to her that much, uh, does it matter to Riva? What are your comments on the option one, option two thing, because it sounds like, you know, these gentlemen are being sensitive to the fact that. You know, there's been an impact on businesses because of this COVID thing, and I think they're working that into the option two plan, so what are your thoughts on that? And I, but I hear Skyler saying, but what is your comment?
Well, first off, it always matters to me, um, so I, I, I was just trying to give the impression that, um. Any of the suggestions that have been brought forward by the consultant, um, I, we can make work. Um, and then I, I wanted to make sure that the council understood that, uh, Lisa and I don't have significant concerns about. The impact to the city's general fund and our ability to provide, um, the services that we need, that's the, the. First and foremost thing that I want you to take away from this, um, uh, so, um, I think it is important for us to be. Um, sensitive to the fact that we have had all of our commercial properties, um, particularly those in the civic center, as well as citywide. Closed for the last two months, um, so we certainly don't want to do anything that would add an additional burden to them, so if it's something that we can. Um, you know, absorb and make work and carry forward, um, as a liability in the, the general fund. Uh, for a year or two years, I, I don't see it as an impact, and, and maybe Lisa might want to weigh in more. Um, on this, I should have looked more deeper in the weeds on it than I have been, but again, I think, um, any of the recommendations, uh, will work.
Um, and yeah, I would just reiterate what Riva said is that we're comfortable that the general fund is fine. Um, and I think that if you decided to go with the option of. Of option one, where the fee increases to cover existing costs, I think we feel. Fairly comfortable now that existing costs, we have a, a, a good handle, we're almost two years into running the plant. So, we have our arms around what it's costing right now, um, and. I don't know that there's any rush to repay the general fund, that money, it's, that three hundred thousand is. You know, a loan out there, whether it comes in, in three years, in five years, or you defer it for four years. It will ultimately come back to the city, and I don't, so I don't think that's a big concern, I did hear, I, I do. I think you should note that what, um, we're looking for in terms of the future is that when phase two comes in, when other properties come in. Then the rate goes down, um, because it's spread over a larger number of people. Um, that being said, if you felt compelled to, um, it defer for one year, it does increase. The, um, the general fund loan, but again, it's not an insurmountable cost, I think we feel pretty comfortable. That it's manageable, um, it just means that the rates, when you do go to the, um. To the properties that are connected become higher, it's ju- it's, um, then they have a bigger pill to swallow, the longer you push it out. So those are my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, anyone else have any thoughts on this?
I, I have my hand raised.
Sorry, Jefferson, I didn't see you, thank you.
Uh, my one question for the city attorney this evening, uh, to rattle Trevor's cage, once again, I have a, a property in phase two. Um, I won't be on the city council at the time when this all takes place, do you think I need to recuse myself, or can I add to the vote?
This is only dealing with phase one, right, so there shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
Thanks for checking.
Mayor, do you want to try for the public speaker again?
Oh, okay, sure, that was Drew Newman, is that correct?
It was.
We see him on the. Participation list.
Drew, are you there?
He looks to be unmuted.
Okay, Drew Newman. Just not. Okay. Skyler, did you have your hand up?
I mean, I guess if the, the rate and all that stuff isn't good, it wouldn't increase necessarily to the end of this year. I mean, maybe because of everything that's gone on with COVID, you know, maybe option two is, is better, we just defer it for. A year, but. Um. And then we can go with option two there and just, and pay it back in three years, but they're gonna see it. You know, they're gonna see a significant increase in their costs, I guess, regardless of what we do at some point, but in a, a year and a half from now.
I can support that, option two, three-year, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are we ready for a roll call vote? Council, okay, I believe so, Heather.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yep.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Fair.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that was our final item, and I would like to adjourn. In memory of our poet laureate. Oram Reich. Uh, it was a surprise to me to learn of her passing, and I know it was to many other people, and. Uh, to quote, uh, something I read in the newspaper this week, she was a bright light. So she will be missed and she will be remembered for her gifts. And with that, we are adjourned. At eight fifty-five P M.
Thank you.